I will be done on our earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not to temptation but deliver us from evil for Thine kingdom, our power and glory forever and ever. Amen. My allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was just trying to see if the real president was ready to take over again.
I'm keeping you.
Okay. Item C, approval minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, a minute shall stand approved for the February 18th, 2019 council meeting. Citizens Communication, is there anyone with us this evening that would like to speak on any matter that is not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item E, reports from council committees. Finance and Budget Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items. Safety and Human Resources Committee did meet on February 25th, reviewed the EMS cost with revenues with Freedom, Harrison and Napoleon Township, Henry County South Joint Ambulance District and the Village of Florida. And then the Technology and Communications Committee did not meet earlier this evening due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item G, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 020-19, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for, accept and enter into an Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, OEP A, Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance, DEFA, Water Pollution Control Fund, WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the City of Napoleon for planning, design and/or construction of water, wastewater treatment facilities and designing a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring it an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Council President Protam. This item came up just kind of as a recent addition to the agenda. This would be to allow us to apply for a loan, submit an application for a loan to these organizations, to DFA and WPCLF for the wastewater treatment plant rehab. Right now, we would be applying for up to $10 million and that's just to secure the loan if we collectively decide to move forward with the design and construction of the rehabbing the wastewater treatment plant. Other than that, it's just an application, anything that comes of it, we would need council approval. And what we've seen in years past in other communities as well is that these loans, that sometimes they do principal forgiveness on the loans, which is essentially a grant, but they can't award that until we get the applications in. So this would just allow us to make that application. It has suspension requested. I talked with Chad and rather than, you know, I don't know the urgency of it and I don't know if you have any comments to make with regard to this?
There is a suspension requested. The only reason suspension was requested is because traditionally that's what we've done on these. I don't need it within the next week. If you'd like to take three reads on this, it's not going to hurt us, but all this is doing is giving the city manager permission to sign the application, so whatever your preference.
If we're awarded, the award would come in 2019, 2020, 21, 2030?
Oh, well, yeah. Why don't you talk about this schedule?
It depends on the timing. It would probably be sometime in calendar year 2019. Traditionally, when we ask for funding through a grant or a loan, we front the money and then get reimbursed at the end.
Okay.
However, this job is large enough, the design contract could very possibly be close to a million dollars. We can't handle that, so we would actually have that money. What we would do is they would send in their invoices, we would forward that to DFA, then DFA would pay them direct.
Okay.
It's the same thing we did on the water plant, except this is the wastewater side, whereas water plant was the water side, obviously, but it's the same organization.
Okay.
When we, I've just put on the screen, when we discussed this in budget, it was $950,000 was what was estimated for design of the headwork, so basically phase one of the project.
We are currently advertising for the design services. We have not selected an engineering firm, therefore we have not, we have not started negotiating a contract, but you can apply for more than you need and you only borrow what you use. So if we apply for $10 million, we are not dedicated to that amount. The loan will be for whatever amount we actually use when the project's over.
And we wouldn't have to pay down principal or interest until money is actually spent, and I believe it actually doesn't need to be paid until the following year.
Right. Chris, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong. Is it six months, I believe, after the completion of the construction when we have to make our first payment? And the design loan is rolled into the construction loan, so.
I'm going to make a motion as for suspension.
Okay, is there a second for the suspension?
I'll second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passed under suspension on first reading. We go to second reading of ordinances and resolutions, number, resolution number 012-19, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 for the purpose of implementation of a GIS system and to sole source said implementation to Sandtech Consulting Services and Company and declaring it an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Got a second somewhere? Joe? Okay.
I'll just turn over Chad, he's up here.
There's nothing new on this one. As mentioned before, this is our, hoping to be our last phase of getting the GIS system implemented. The contract that we negotiated was for $100,000. We had $115,000 in the budget, so this is the second read on allowing us to execute that contract with Sandtech Consulting.
Okay. Any questions?
When it's done, how is it updated?
We, part of what we are hoping to get finished this year is to purchase, which is separate from this, is to purchase the standalone software. Right now, all the updates are done through Sandtech.
Okay.
If we, if our staff isn't able to do that, they're willing to continue to do that work for a small fee.
Okay.
So it'll either be updated by Sandtech or we will bring it in-house and try to do it with our staff, so.
Anything else? Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes. Lori?
Yes.
Okay. That was the second reading for that one. Resolution number 016-19, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept a physical year 2019 JAG LE grant from the Office of Criminal Justice Services and declaring it an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Nothing new to report on this, other than I'm going to request that we, that council suspend this and pass it now. The reason is that we got some new information. This is a new grant source for us. Chief, do you want to talk about some of the new information that we received, that the timing of some of the documents required, we actually got an extension, so we didn't realize it until it was already too late, so that's why we're going to request suspension, so we can get the application documents in.
Right. Once I got the email, there was a very short turnaround on it, so what we found out is that, I called down and got an extension on it, so it was like about a 10-day window on it. It's for our car cameras, we're at least trying to get that program started, so that's really the new information. We're hoping the, for the grant that we will be completed by September area is what the grant requirement, so it'd be a summer project for us.
Yep. So is there, thank you, Chief, is there a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay. Roxanne, call the roll on the resolution.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, resolution passed on second and final reading under suspension. Excuse me. Ordinance number 017-19, an ordinance creating the non-bargaining position of Assistant Water Superintendent for the Water Treatment Plant of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and amending ordinance number 075-18 and declaring it an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? City Manager or Attorney, who's handling that?
I'll be handling it. This is just a second read for the, what was discussed in the budget process and, you know, this, like I mentioned before, it's, it's a good way to help retain employees at the water plant, a place that we've struggled to retain employees at, so also found out that, you know, we, there are other water systems that are struggling to attract and retain water treatment plant operators and wastewater treatment plant operators. You know, we've been very fortunate with the wastewater plant, not fortunate at all with the water treatment plant, but anything we can do to help keep the people that we have, we've got a really, really good staff right now. They're, it's a younger staff, they don't have as many years of experience as some places, but all of whom, except for one, have Class III operator licenses, so it's an experienced, in terms of, you know, certifications, staff, and, you know, not many, not many places have what we have right now, so, you know, this addition would really do, would be a big help for us to maintain what we have.
I want to say a few things. I talked to some of the staff members today. They said today's the first day that they're full capacity, staff-wise. True.
For a long time.
Yes.
Now, there was a one-week period where they were fully staffed last year, and then some of them left.
But as of today, we're fully staffed.
Yeah, as of today, yep.
So I talked to them a little bit, also, and said, how about they move things up a little bit tonight and they do suspension on this, would you guys be ready to go forward?
Well, yeah, it would expedite our, the hiring, or the, I guess, the promotion process.
Okay. Well, I'm making motions for suspension then.
I'll second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll on the motion.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. And I think that, I think that'll go a real, real long way with everybody at the plant, too.
Sure.
That means a lot.
That then has also passed under suspension. I, third reading of ordinances, there are none tonight. Excuse me again. Jay, good of the city, discussion, action, approval of plans and specifications for the Williams Pumping Station replacement project.
Well, I'm just going to turn this one over to Chad because he's been working on it for about, you know, a year and a half.
Okay, Mr. City Engineer, you're on again.
Yes, we've had this one on the agenda two or three times now and not taken action. We are finally able to take action and I request approval of the plans and specifications so we can put out for bid the Williams Pumping Station replacement project. This project will replace the 41-year-old.
Forty-one-year-old.
Forty-one-year-old pump station located out near the trailer court on the northwest side of town. We'll, we'll build a new pump station that will reroute the sewage from the Oberhaus interceptor and forward it to the Van Heining. Oberhaus is currently a little overloaded, but with your approval, we'll get this out for bid this week. The engineer's estimate of construction on this project is at $1.5 million, and this project also is being partially funded through DFA, the same stuff we approved earlier that's in place for this project as well, so.
Now, what are you needing from us tonight, then, Chad?
Just a simple motion, approval of the plans and specs so we can advertise this project.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Chad.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and I've got a confirmation from the attorney that I know, that I think I know what I'm doing. Yeah, Roxanne?
That's what you were looking for, I thought.
Yes, exactly.
$1.5 is the estimate.
Can you call the roll, please?
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, is that?
Thank you. I got the next one, too.
Why don't you stay up there. Number two, discussion, action, approval of plans and specifications for the Raymond Street Improvement Project. Chad?
Yes, in the 2019 budget, when we were preparing that last fall, we mentioned the development of the new senior housing project in the undeveloped land at the end of what is currently now the dead-end street, Raymond Street. That street currently, the existing street currently does not meet our current city standards for width, it's relatively narrow. I presented to Council my recommendation to widen that street before we get a senior housing development in that field. We have those plans finished. The plans will allow us to replace the street, install a sidewalk on the north side. All the underground utilities are currently in, so we will not have to do any utility work. My estimate for this project is $170,000, and so I ask that by simple motion, you approve the plans and specs so we can get this project out for bid.
I have on the screen the, what was in the budget, total project cost of $204,000. You know, there's stormwater improvements, widening of the street, and it's mostly street expenses, but.
Yep, and we were able to keep each one of them under budget.
And this was all discussed at budget time?
Yes.
Correct.
And it is on the master bid ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
You had a second somewhere.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? You got that? Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, fire EMS contracts with Freedom, Harrison, Napoleon Township, Henry County South Joint Ambulance District and the Village of Florida. Mr. Fire Chief, you have anything you want to share?
No, there's nothing I want to add, no. Unless you want me to.
Oh, unless you have something you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. I need a motion then, I think I need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation for such.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, Henry County, am I on to?
Mitigation.
Mitigation plan. Joel?
Thank you. I'm going to throw a curveball. Okay. This is something that kind of popped up and, you know, after some discussion with the Henry County EMA. Apparently, they require legislation to adopt the Henry County mitigation plan, which we've, Chad and Chief, and Chief all provided comments, along with, I believe, Jeff Rathke, and we had some input from other department heads on the mitigation plan, so it's where we need it to be, at least our portion of it. They, for lack of a better term, they maintained that mitigation plan and implement it. What they need is actual legislation to adopt it, and Billy, we had it on the agenda to just direct the law director to draft legislation for it, but Billy went ahead and drafted the legislation for it, so I'd like to request that Council motion to have it added to the agenda and then suspend the rules and then pass it for tonight, just so that they can get it in their hands and approved. The reason is that there is, there is apparently some funding attached to it, that they need this passed as quickly as possible so that they can be eligible for some type of grant funding for the adoption of this mitigation plan, so.
So it's supposed to be on a chance review? Are we going to read it word for word?
If you'd like, yeah.
I mean, we have a chance to see it, so we're supposed to pass it under emergency with suspension. Legislation, we haven't seen.
So what happened essentially was midweek last week, at one point, we got a forward from the county, declaring it very necessary that this take place extremely quickly. It's not a piece of legislation that had been discussed with me prior, so I, we contacted the EMA, the County EMA, Tracy, and explained to him kind of what we were trying to understand. He explained to us that this needed to take place very quickly, and then he sent along some examples as well. So in the interest of potentially, if council wants to, getting this accomplished quickly so that we can cooperate with the County EMA in getting this federal funding, we drafted and prepared this legislation. However, it was not added to the agenda because nobody had asked that it be added to the agenda. So I brought it along. If county, council would like to do something about it, if not, then that's obviously council's prerogative.
Any comments?
Well, let, I would say, let people read.
I'd like to see it first, yeah.
People read this. You want to take a, I think we should probably take a five-minute recess, so people can read this. I'd do that. Do we do that?
Motion for a five-minute recess. Is there a second to that?
Jupsi?
Need to call the roll?
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, we're on recess for five minutes.
Does Chris can copy?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, is there a motion to add item number four to the agenda for this evening?
Council President Protam, if I may add a few comments?
Okay, sure.
Just to, just to clarify, the mitigation plan was reviewed almost a year ago by, by staff, by a lot of the, majority of the department heads, Denny Clapp, Chad, both chiefs, Jeff Rathke, and if it had been brought to our attention sooner or differently, where we would have known that this was needed with such urgency, we would have had it on there sooner. It just came to Billy and I through an email through the Tracy Bush and the prosecutor's office, the Henry County Prosecutor's Office.
It was middle of the week to the end of the week last week, so.
Yeah, and it, you know, like I said, this has been in the works, reviewed over a year ago, or not quite a year, but almost a year ago, so, yeah, just, just trying to accommodate the county on this one, and like I said, if we would have known this was absolutely needed for some type of grant funding, it would have been on there, so.
If we wait two weeks, what's that going to do to it? What do you think?
Honestly, I don't know. I don't, I don't have enough information from them to know when they, any grant application is due or when, what application they're applying for, what funding source they're applying for. All I know is that.
Can we ask somebody to make a call to Tracy and see how urgent this is?
Yes. If we got to do a special, let's do a special. If it's, if it's due before March 18th, we get a special meeting, we have a special meeting, the five people council, pass. You know what I mean?
And I'll tell you, Billy and I were working on dual paths here, so I requested that Rox put this on the agenda, just to have the council direct the law director to draft legislation for two weeks from now, and just because that's, you know, if it would have been, like I said, if it had been communicated differently, but he had the legislation drafted already, so I just thought that would be an opportunity for us to get it, to get it on and pass now, but if, you know, if it's the preference to wait two weeks, then, then so be it, and it's just the way it's got to be.
I like the mayor's idea also, you know, if you can get ahold of Tracy tomorrow and he says, hey, we need it, you know, before the two weeks, let us know, we'll do a special meeting, and that gives you a little bit of time to get more information to give to us so we can make an educated decision on this.
Right. Chief O'Brien?
Yeah.
Is it possible for you to contact Tracy Bush today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah. And see if, you know.
Talk, come up here.
Or just find out what the, what the rush is.
Okay.
When the application due date is and if we can wait two weeks. Thanks.
Yep.
So we can, we could, we could move the agenda to item number five, if you want to wait and then circle back.
To move the agenda, do I need the table first?
I would.
Yeah, since we talked about.
Motion to table, item number four.
So moved.
Second. Roxanne, call the roll on tabling.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jetham?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, go on to item number five, discussion of action, acceptance of donation to the K9 program. Chief Mack, is that you?
Thank you, sir. We've actually received several donations over the last couple of weeks, a couple of them from private citizens, the Ayupa attorneys, which is their count, our staff or union employees, their attorney organization, they also donated, and we received $2,000 from Automatic Feed today.
Wow.
Just today.
Yeah, so it's not included in there.
That puts our funding, if my numbers are served, may correct, about 12, six is kind of where we're at right now, and we really have pushed real super hard. We received a donation from a local citizen and then one from Dayton, a citizen who knows individuals in this area and knew that we were looking for some funding, so they also donated $500. That's the attorney's office that represents our union employees. And I think that's it for this one, right?
That's it, yep.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
That's it.
I think that's it for now, but it puts our total funding at right around 12, five, or 12, six right now, so.
Yeah.
Is it plus automatic feed came today?
Automatic feed came today, yes.
Yeah, just today.
That's included in that, Chief, you said, you said you just gave?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. It was kind of the last minute add-on.
The copy isn't in there, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to accept these donations?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Jeff, second by Laurie. Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Okay, those donations have been accepted.
Thank you, council.
Not one right there.
Number six, discussion action of acceptance of a donation for the fire training facility. Mr. City Manager, the fire chief is temporarily out at your request. Do you wanna?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There was, there were, from what I recall from the story from Clayton, there was a new resident in town, new residents, and they happened to have a couple of incidents that they had called for service, the fire department. And they responded, just like they always do. They came in, they did what they needed to do, and saved them from turmoil, and requested that they remain anonymous, but they made it $500 donation to be used at the fire training facility because they're so appreciative of the service that was provided to them.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept that donation?
So moved.
Motion by Ken?
Second.
Second by Jeff C. Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M. Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Okay, item seven, discussion action, appointments to the tax incentive review council.
Well, we need appointments, I believe Jeff and, Jeff, oh yeah, Jeff and Jeff were both on there last time. So if you wanna be reappointed, or?
I would, I'd like to do it again. No problem with me.
That's something you do, or just a motion?
I don't think that's one of mine, is it?
Simple motion to approve whoever's.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Jeff and Jeff to retain their positions with this tax incentive review council?
So moved.
Second.
We do have the motion. Call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Okay, item eight, discussion of action, first quarter budget adjustments. Will be moved to finance and budget. Is that you, sir?
It is.
Okay. That will go on to your committee.
Okay.
Motion to untable number four.
Mitigation plan.
Second.
Okay, back to item number four. It's been untabled. Mr. Fire Chief, I guess you're on.
So I just got off the phone with Tracy Bush, and he explained that the mitigation plan, it is attached to some grant funding. And the grant funding is to write.
Hold on one second, I guess. We gotta.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Do I need to start back over?
No.
So it is attached to some grant funding, but the grant funding is for them to write the mitigation plan. He said that two weeks would be fine. He was just not wanting it to be like four or six weeks. He asked, I just explained to him that it was not on the agenda, and that council was hesitant on just passing something that wasn't on the agenda without the ample time to be able to review it and to come back to it. And so he did step out of a movie for us to have this conversation. And so, but he did say that two weeks would be okay if we would be able to review that, and maybe revisit it on the next council meeting, and have that on the agenda, and just if we would request suspension of the rules at that point, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep.
So what do I, what do I need to do now?
Direct the law director to draft the thing that's already in your hand.
Okay, do I have a motion to direct the law director to draft a resolution for this mitigation plan?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
And, thank you, Chief, for checking it out. Thank you, Joel. I think the general consensus here is just we, you know, did not have a chance to look at this ahead of time.
No, I get it. Just, you know, if I didn't ask, then it wouldn't have happened, you know?
And so I think this is best that we.
Just trying to accommodate what was asked of us, and actually it was, you know, Billy stepped up and wrote the legislation. Hey, we're just.
We apologize for the efficiencies.
Sorry about that. But we're, you know, just trying to accommodate what seemed to us was a rush, you know, some type of an emergency on their end.
And thank you, Chief, for checking on that. And I think people are just trying to make this difficult for me tonight here.
Yep.
Anyway, where was I? Okay, go around the table here. We'll start with you.
I have nothing.
Just glad to see Joe back.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's all.
Jeff?
Quiet.
I'm relatively quiet. Again, I am very glad to see Joe back, and hopefully very soon, he will be actually running the meeting. So, but we are glad that you're back here with us.
My doctor said he'll be here in two months.
So we appreciate the fact that you're back. We worked on appreciating the fact that you are running the meeting again eventually. But I have nothing else. Joe?
Okay. Just another thank you to everyone for the prayers and the support. Really appreciate it, and just feels like a second family here to me, and really means a lot. So, thank you again.
Mr. Mayor?
Dan, I can't tell you how many times I bowed my head for the prayer, and then my head started saying, "Come, Lord Jesus, be our guest." And when we started this morning with the prayer, with the pledge, it kinda made me laugh that I didn't do it, but I thought it many times, so.
At least I didn't cut you off tonight.
No, that's fine. That's good. That's good. So we're getting better that way. Congratulations. We had the girls bowling team took third place in state. We had a wrestler qualify for state. Our girls basketball team is two-time district champs. So I think last year was the first time they ever were district champs, and other than the back-to-backs. Congratulations to all the athletic teams for all their hard work in the winter. And I know the girls got their work cut out for them tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night at Ohio Northern. But we wish them all the best of luck.
Can I jump on that? Just thank the police department for the escort on Saturday night for the girls. I had a chance to go watch that, and the girls had so much fun, and a lot of people were out, so they did a nice job.
We, at some point, wanted to have like an open house for the water treatment plant. Can we have a date by March 18th of when we're gonna have that?
Yeah, right now, we're looking at April 12th. So if you pencil that one in, that's when we're looking at having that open house.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
And it's on a Friday, because.
Well, Congressman Ladd said that's, you know, he's usually around, he likes to come to that. So that's what he said on a Friday, so.
That all, sir?
That's all finished. Yep, thank you.
Jeff? I saw the pictures from Chief O'Brien on the airboat. How did that go for the training?
It went really well.
And the airboat performed as expected or better?
It actually performed really well. It is completely different on the ice than it is on the water. So that was a lot of new learning experiences out there, but we were very, very pleased with the way that it was.
Thank you. And kudos to Chief Mack. Can you talk about the award? You're getting an award next week?
Don't know much about it. It dealt with the memorial.
Gotcha.
Day parade from last year.
Okay.
So from the Legion post.
That's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. Are we invited to that, or how? Is there an event, I guess?
Yeah, it's their event. I received it from the Legion, so, but I can call and ask.
Okay. And thank you for your part in getting Officer Tippel's name on the national law enforcement memorial. So I'm thinking about, are we sending someone from Napoleon for the under guard?
We don't have an under guard in Napoleon.
Gotcha. Were you planning to attend?
I, in Ohio, definitely.
Gotcha.
And then Joel talked to me about Washington DC. We were gonna take a look at the budget and see what that looked like.
Yep. So, yes, yes and yes.
Okay.
And then.
I would like to go if it happens, if it happens.
Yep, okay.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all you have. Ken?
Nothing except glad to see that the police were out and escorted the team through town.
Our pleasure. It's easy when I'm into games, so.
That's a week last day. That's it.
Billy?
Nothing there.
Joel?
Thank you. Would like to request, Chad, the crack ceiling program. There's, this is another item, just requesting that council approve, or direct the law director to draft legislation for the ODOT bid, the state bid contract for crack ceiling.
Yes, this came up middle of the week last week. It was new information to Jeff Rathke and I. We discovered we have to have special legislation drafted to partake in the state cooperative purchasing agreement for crack ceiling. They sent us examples that we will provide to the law department, but I just request that council direct the law department to draft the appropriate legislation. And also, I'd like to request that the law department look at whether this legislation truly needs to be done, which would be part of this.
Yep.
Is it in the budget?
Yes, yes, it's in the budget. But it was our understanding that if we had a project on the master bid ordinance, that we could buy services and equipment off the state cooperative agreement. The information we were provided last week, looks like that's not the case unless you do additional legislation. So I'd like to get with legal and go through some of that.
Sure. I mean, those are our rules, and yeah, that's sufficient for us.
Right. It looks like it's a state rule, but.
If they want something additional, we can, we can draft something additional, a piece of paper to send to them. It's fine. Hey, we do this all day. I don't know. That's my job.
Yeah, it was new to us. We weren't aware of this, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation for this purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Can I make a comment real quick before you vote? Chad, we'll be requesting suspension on this because of the timing of the contract that ODOT.
Yes, we will be requesting suspension, all paperwork. According to the state, all paperwork's due by March 31st. So we have one more council meeting. Otherwise, I might have hoped to get it on for tonight, but I knew we had one more council meeting, so I didn't wanna push my luck on that one.
So at this point, the motion is just to draft the legislation.
Correct.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. One item that we've discussed at the last Water and Sewer Committee meeting was the solids management.
Yes.
And we kinda talked about how, you know, kind of future planning, and what we're seeing with land application of biosolids and some of the EPA rules that are coming out. I mentioned this to Commissioner Von Diehl, and he suggested that I put this on the agenda and talk with him about this at one of their commissioner meetings, if that's okay with everybody. I was gonna do that. And the reason is, they're thinking of maybe solids management countywide, and maybe have a central location like at the landfill or something like that. So, you know, to benefit all the wastewater systems in the county, so, as well as us. Maybe forming some kind of partnership when that need arises. Also, Commissioner Von Diehl and I have been kinda talking back and forth about maybe having another joint session between commissioners and council. I'm kinda struggling right now to find some agenda items, so if you have any, if you could let me know, if that's something we wanna do, or if that's something that council wants to do, to meet with the joint session with the commissioners. We haven't done it in a while, so they figured it might be a good time to get back together and just kinda discuss some issues that pertain to both entities. So if you have any issues to bring up, please let me know. And if we can get a meaningful agenda together, we'll schedule a meeting.
Are you gonna have something next week, or do you wanna wait for this, or is it just the one item next week?
For Water and Sewer Committee, just the one item.
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
Lastly, we just got back from the trip from Washington. It was productive. My feet are sore. They were sore, they're starting to feel better now, but a lot of walking, gotta wear comfortable shoes. And I, but I think we had a lot of meaningful discussion with our legislator and their staff, not just on the AMP issues, but the, our local issues as well. So, believe it or not, you know, looking back and reflecting back on everything that we did, I think that Wednesday morning, talking with Portman and their staff at the coffee, with constituents, even though we talked to them for a total, grand total of four minutes, still had, has a lot of impact. And I do think, I have some follow-up to do on my end, but I think that, those little tidbits go a long way. That's all I have. There's some executive session items, but we'll go over them.
Is it your call, or? Okay, we do need to have an executive session then. A motion for executive session to consider the appointment or employment of a public employee or official in collective bargaining matters. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for such?
Those would be separate matters.
First of all, for employment of a public employee?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne?
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes.
And executive session for collective bargaining?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne?
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn into executive session. Okay, can I have a motion to come out of executive session for the appointment or employment of a public employee?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
No action taken. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session for collective bargaining matters?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie. Yes.
Okay. Now.
No action taken.
No action taken, thank you. Can I have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation for the police department contract, starting with the fiscal year 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. With that, item L, approval of payment of bills and financial reports.
Okay, I got one.
Oh, I knew it. As soon as I pulled this out of the.
We got a new freight liner for the electric department, the bucket truck.
Yep.
We haven't replaced a seat in it already. Why wouldn't?
No. I don't know the details, but they, something, they put a better seat in it and gave us the one that came with it. So we have that one as a spare. Can't remember what the details were. It was a little wider one, and it fit better in the area, if I remember Denny telling me correctly.
Yeah, and I can't remember too. I think it had this.
It was a wider seat.
There was something to do with the equipment. It needed the equipment inside of the, inside of the vehicle.
Right.
So the seat needed to be changed out.
Right.